Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, March 12, 2015, meeting of the Lawrence School Committee. This time, we'd ask you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. I'd like to begin this evening with just referencing some items in your packet. I believe the school committee asked for a bunch of items from the last meeting. You were sent a bunch of those items, included in which are some of the school committee meetings, which should be in your packet. If anyone is missing anything, we can certainly give you some after, but we're trying to make sure that you guys get the information in a timely fashion. As we begin tonight, we're going to ask Heather Langaloyes to come up. Heather Langaloyes is one of our arts coordinators in the district, and she's going to be talking about the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, as well as showing you a brief video, I believe. Thank you so much. John?
So, this year, we had 23 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards for Lawrence Public Schools. Scholastic Art and Writing Competition is the largest and most prestigious art competition in the country. And regionally, we had, you're getting a pamphlet right now, we had seven Gold Key winners, and the rest silver and honorable mention, from grades seven through 12. Six of them were from the Partham School alone, six of the golds, rather, and three silver. And the rest were from the high school and one other middle school. So, present here tonight to receive certificates are from the Partham School, a Gold Key recipient, Eliza Garcia. Have her come up. And another Gold Key recipient from the high school, the only Gold Key from the high school, Brianna Romero. So, this video, a little montage that I put together, it's in order of Scholastic winners, starting with the gold, then the silver, then the honorable mention, and then other schools also submitted work. They weren't fortunate to receive any awards, but it's a privilege just to submit. And then, in the middle of the video, is a mosaic project that took place at the Partham School this year. We had a resident artist, David Fichter, that came and did a mural, put together by the designs of our students, which were some of the Gold Key recipients as well. And at the end of the video, which I'll tell you briefly about after the video ends, is some of the artwork being done for a first-ever student art auction called Lawrence Landscapes. So, that's what you'll be seeing in this. The Gold Key recipients show up, so I just wanted to give them their certificates as well. Karina Gill from the Partham Middle School. And Natalie Guzman from the Partham Middle School. And Brittany Ortiz from the PFA.
In a moment, we're going to ask all of our students' art winners that are here tonight to come up and take a picture with the mayor and the school committee. I did, however, want to introduce our new student representatives. This council was anxious to have student representatives, and we agreed. And Mr. Fiatto has been kind enough to send two students to us, Amarilis Lopez and Arcania Coronado. Am I saying that correctly? As your first official duty, will you join the school committee in taking a photo with our Scholastic Art winners? Go ahead, you go too.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. They won't bite. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Me or you?
You have one more thing for us? Okay, let them get settled, and you can be here.
I just want to have one more quick little thing to promote. Like I mentioned before, we have our first-ever student art auction, April 16, in the Everett Mills. Ms. Pat Mariano is on our auction committee, and we would love for everybody to come. The students are going to be selling their work. They're going around the city, taking pictures and doing paintings and assorted media of their city, of their landscape, whatever inspires them. It can be something cultural, or any of the industrial, the mills, things like that, however they interpret it. And we're going to display them. The students benefit 100 percent. They receive the proceeds from the painting and the sale of the tickets. They're able to take a class at Essex Art Center over the summer for free. And if we have any seniors that are going on to art school, they will receive a scholarship towards that with the money raised. We also have some participating people in the community from restaurants and businesses that will be donating food for the evening, so trying to collaborate with them to get them some business as well and bring more revenue to the city. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Langaloyes. This time, we'd ask Anne Marie Strawnak to come up and to present on Kids Cuisine.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I would like to let you know that we have a Kids Cuisine program going on at the Gilmet School at the beginning of the year. As you know, the Gilmet School was giving a very prestigious enrichment grant. At that time, we were thinking about some creative enrichment programs that we could provide at the school level, and we came up with an idea utilizing the head cooks in our school, as well as some of our cafeteria workers. And because the program was after school, we were able to accommodate that school. We are currently serving a six-week program, six to eight weeks, depending on the calendar. And we're serving about 15 to 20 students in a class. Two head cooks, along with two cafeteria workers. We're utilizing this book called Recipes for Healthy Meals, which we brought copies for all of you. And what we're doing in that class is we're teaching our students some quick, healthy meals that they can prepare at home. We also have Jeannie Baronic from UMass Extension coming in once a week to do nutrition classes with them, and just teaching them some simple skills such as knife techniques, kitchen safety, and food temperature, so that they do not get sick when they're preparing their food. And I think we have a small video to talk about the program and hear from our students themselves.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Marte. I'm here at the Gilmet School, teaching the kids' class. The program is all about teaching kids how to eat healthy.
Hi, I'm Aliana Rodriguez, and we are an enrichment cooking class.
Teaching the kids' class. How to properly wash, cut vegetables, wash food, how to prepare.
Some things that we made here, I did at home too, you know, because I liked it.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Rubin, and what I like about the enrichment classes, we get to cook and learn about new foods. And my favorite food that we did here was cheese fries, and yeah, they were really good.
My name is Ryan Waterman. We make a lot of healthy foods. We never make anything unhealthy. I've liked cooking for a long time, and I love this class because we get to cook a lot of healthy foods and try a lot of different things. And when I get home, I don't have to eat.
Well, this enrichment program is for us to, like, have some fun, even though that we are in school.
My name is Samuel Morales, and I enjoy cooking.
My name is Jasmine, and I enjoy cooking.
My name is Remi Magra, and I enjoy cooking.
My name is Jariel Javier, and I enjoy cooking.
Hi, my name is Julio Gonzalez.
To end this, my experience has been wonderful. This is the first time that I teach my kids' class, so I'm hoping by doing this that it continues in the future, so the kids can learn how to eat healthy, even though this is a fast pace, so in the future, they can continue doing it and share this with the family.
So, I would like to thank the entire Nutrition Services Department. Gary Watts just handed you out that book, and I do want you to know that when the USDA was putting this book together, we utilized our Chefs in School program, and we were very much collaborative in helping develop some of these recipes that you see in this book as well, and that happened a couple of years ago, so we're pretty proud of that as well.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to move out of order and put breakfast in the classroom, since Ms. Strawnak is here.
By all means.
Thank you. So, I just want to share with you that we currently have five schools who have breakfast in the classroom. That would be the Oliver Partnership School, the Hennessy School, the Lala School, the Lawrence Family Academy, and the Leonard. We are also working with the Frost Middle School, and the Partham grades three and four, and the Weatherby grades five, to pilot there this year. The important thing about breakfast in the classroom is that it gives students the fuel that they need to accept the academics. What they do is they come in in the morning, they grab their meal at some schools, and they bring it right into the classroom with them, and they have it during, while the teacher's taking attendance. The whole thing takes about 10 to 15 minutes while the teacher's acclimating them for the day. Obviously, it's important to stop the day without having hunger. It also reduces nurse visits, we're aware of that, and also helps with behavior in the classroom. And not all of our students are ready and able to get to school early enough to eat breakfast, so this helps in that effort as well. So, it's pretty much minimal work. We received a grant from the Eos Foundation this year for the Hennessy, and up Leonard for $20,000. What that allowed us to do was buy some thermal bags that those schools are taking the breakfasts into the classroom, and then breakfast is handed out to the students at about nine o'clock during the break. It also allowed us to give each of our teachers $100 in those schools, so that they could buy some classroom supplies at their discretion, as well as giving us some money to support the labor costs. But I do have to tell you that once this program gets past the 80 percent mark, it pretty much pays for itself, because similar to a restaurant, our funds are based on the more we serve, the more we are able to get in funds. So, it's a pretty great program. We're very pleased to have it in our schools. And just to give you some idea, we served last year 4,722 meals per day, for a total of, and that's breakfasts only, I'm sorry, for a total of 854,623 hundred. And now, we are currently serving 5,823 meals per day on any given day for breakfast. So, it's increased our participation quite a bit in that, and we think that that helps our students tremendously, so we're pretty pleased about that.
Any questions from the group?
Mr. Blatchford?
Thank you. So, the program that we have now for if there is breakfast in school, like, right before school starts, is that just in the high school? Is that the elementary, middle school levels?
No, we have breakfast in all of our schools. And as I said, some schools have different forms, but there is breakfast in every school, typically about a half hour to 45 minutes prior to the bell ringing.
And would this, if implemented across all schools, would this replace that, or would that be in addition to?
This would replace it. That's what we're doing in these schools, that we're doing service breakfasts in the classroom now. It actually replaces it. The cafeteria is open in the morning because they are prepping, but they come in, in some schools, and grab it, so they still can get it a little bit earlier, but it basically replaces it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strawnak. Not sure if folks had an opportunity to go.
Hold on a second. Ms. Ortiz had something. I apologize, I could not see.
Thank you. So, we're replacing, so he asked, Mr. Blatchford asked a question. So, ultimately, is it the goal to replace breakfast in the morning? And if so, will it be as nutritional as it is?
So...
Is it basically just taking what the kids are getting off the line and bringing it upstairs, or is it something completely different?
So, it is a little bit different, because it's very hard to serve a hot meal in the classroom, so it is a little bit different. What I had Gary give all of you is a little bit of a sample of what breakfast in the classroom might look like. It's not what's served every single day, but that is one of the option items, and that is served with a milk, and it also goes up with several pieces of fresh fruit, so that the students can take a piece of fresh fruit if they would prefer that. So, the meal, we have the guidelines that we have to stick to in terms of nutrition services in both, all of our meal components, that would be breakfast, lunch, and snack. So, we have those guidelines, so no matter what we do, we're going to be serving within those guidelines, because we're required to. It's just a different technique for serving breakfast. The advantage to serving breakfast in the classroom is that we are serving a larger population of our students, and getting them to eat in the morning, as we all know, our mothers were right, it is the most important meal of the day.
So, is, to you, so is the goal then to do K through eight?
The goal is to work with the principals to do what they need to do to make their schools successful, and some schools feel that this is a key component to making their school days successful. Others have very good success with their participation in the early morning programs. Overall, our breakfast participation across the district is 40 percent. I would like to point out that typically in a high school, breakfast has about an 18 percent participation rate, and ours is 29 percent at the high school. So, we serve a very large population of our high school students prior to school starting in terms of what the state does. So, obviously, that takes our average down, but in our elementaries, we're serving about between 39 and 50 percent with our traditional breakfast program. And with our breakfast in the classroom, we're serving pretty much in the 90s.
Last question?
Yep.
So, then, it wouldn't replace every school, but just in the schools that make sense?
Just in the schools where the principal feels that it is a key component to their success.
And it would go K through eight, not just, meaning, let's say, this specific school?
Mm-hmm.
Just say the Leonard.
Yep.
K through...
The Leonard is middle school only.
And Partham?
The Partham, we could actually, if the elementary school wanted it at the elementary level, we would serve it at the elementary level and have a traditional program as well.
Okay.
So, there could be a mix, depending on the complex.
A lot of local choice by each school community, what the principal, teachers, parents are most interested in, and so that happens at the local level.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I was wondering, like, how are they going to determine it? What school is going to be good and what not? Based on what, they're going to be determining that?
What school is actually participating in breakfast in the classroom?
How the principal going to determine it, whether it's convenient for that school or not?
It basically depends on how they feel their breakfast participation is going in the school, and if their students need it. There could be a school where their breakfast participation in the traditional program that is running before school is pretty good, and they're not seeing large student population going to the nurses with hungry stomachs in the morning, or having, you know, kind of disruptions from people being hungry in the morning. So, they may feel that their school isn't necessarily a good fit for this type of program. So, that could weigh into it. It could be the logistics of the space and the time in the classroom as well. So, it could vary from school to school, but it's basically up to the principal to determine if they want to participate in this program.
All right. Fair enough. Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, what would you say is pretty good?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
What percentage of a school population eating breakfast, would you consider to be pretty good?
I personally would like to see at least 50 percent of our students eating breakfast in school, so I would use 50 percent as being pretty good. I know that the state average across any school district is at 38 percent. I gave you the numbers for the breakfast at the high school level, because it dramatically drops participation at the high school level. So, we are well above the state in all of our K to eight schools, but I personally, when I look at percentages for breakfast, I think that 50 percent says that we're doing a good job at what we need to do to support our students.
So, if a school, follow up, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if a school, if they don't implement a program like this, is it, it's probably more likely that they just, they're unable to implement it and take out, you know, class time to get this done, not necessarily that, because it seems like it'd be a huge boon for, you know, for any school, and I would be confused as to, you know, why a principal, kind of going to what Mr. Rodriguez was asking about, I would just be wondering why a principal wouldn't want to do this.
Well, as I said, you know, what works in one school doesn't work in all schools, and I think that it's important to make sure that we have buy-in from the principal. There are some challenges to these programs, and we want to make sure that we're respectful of what those challenges are, and that we're working with the principal to get that buy-in, if this is a program that they choose to utilize in their school. I would agree with you that it's an important and could be a key component, but it depends on what the curriculum is in the morning. It also depends on what time their breakfast, their lunchtimes are, because sometimes that plays into a factor as well. And we're seeing that in some of our complexes, where they're doing it grade-specific, because those students would have a later lunch. Some of our lunches start at 11 o'clock, and they may not need the, you know, they may not feel like that need is such as great as somebody who's having a lunch at 12:30.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Just another question, just about, I know you mentioned regarding the food, that sometimes it varies. Is it, like, is it usually something like this, like cereal juice?
It is. Sometimes it is a wheat chero. Sometimes it is a cheese stick. Sometimes it could be peanut butter and jelly.
What's a wheat chero? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for going out of order.
What's a wheat chero?
My curiosity piqued.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, what is a wheat chero?
It's a chero, and instead of, it's made with wheat, whole wheat, rather than...
That defeats the purpose entirely. Mr. Mariano?
I think they're pretty good.
Mariano, you started slow.
No, no, I was just looking at... I don't know, Frosted Flakes, I was like, wow, that's a lot of sugar, but it says Frosted Flakes multi-grain. I don't know if there's a huge difference.
Actually, I will tell you that school lunch has had a tremendous impact on the cereal industry, and because of the new regulations that the school lunches put in, they have actually reduced the sugar levels in many of the cereals that are now out available on the market. They're not the Frosted Flakes that we had when we were kids.
Good to know.
Mrs. Mariano?
Anne Marie, thank you. Just a quick question. Tell me about the logistics in the classroom. I'm trying to visualize this. The kids are coming in, you have these lunches, breakfast, rather, cartons of milk, cartons of juice. What happens in the classroom after everything is done?
That was, that is one of the challenges that we face. And basically, what happens is the kid grabs, some of these schools do a grab-and-go, I want to be clear on that, too. Some of the kids have a traditional meal, and then they have a grab-and-go, so they're grabbing the bag and taking it to the classroom with them. In the schools that I described with the Eos Foundation, we are actually bringing those up in the thermal bags, which I know that you're familiar with, and those get delivered to the classroom. At a point in the morning during the instructional lull, or what I would say is the teacher's changing focus, the kids come up, they grab their breakfast, and they eat while the teacher's doing the activities that she needs to do, whether it be attendance, whether it be going over homework, various things happen in various stages. It's not always served at the same time every morning, I will tell you that as well. It's served within a window between usually nine and 10 o'clock, and because we use those thermal bags, they have the ability to do that. When they're finished with it, we also purchased barrels, they just put the barrel in there. If, because the student does not have to take the milk, we do serve the milk, but the milk is on the side, so not every student has to take the milk. And I know that that was a challenge that we kind of went back and forth on with the USDA and worked that out with Jesse. So, we serve all the milks in the classroom, and they don't come back to the cafeteria. They typically go to the nurses, and again, because they're in that cooler with the ice packs, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Thank you.
At this time, I believe we're going to show a preview of the Lawrence High School Spring Musical, Peter Pan. I had an opportunity last night to take my daughter Maya to go see Seussical at the Weatherby. I don't know who folks are, but it was an amazing show.
Sorry, this afternoon.
Sometimes it is a wheat chero. Sometimes it is a cheese stick. Sometimes it could be peanut butter and jelly.
What's a wheat chero? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for going out of order.
What's a wheat chero?
My curiosity piqued.
Yeah, no, I was gonna, what is a wheat chero?
It's a chero, and instead of, it's made with wheat, whole wheat, rather than...
That defeats the purpose entirely. Mr. Poyano?
I think they're pretty good.
Poyano, you started the floor.
No, no, I was just looking at... I don't know, like Frosted Flakes, I was like, wow, that's a lot of sugar, but it's Frosted Frake multi-grain. I don't know if there's a huge difference on that.
Actually, I will tell you that school lunch has had a tremendous impact on the cereal industry, and because of the new regulations that the school lunches put in, they have actually reduced the sugar levels in many of the cereals that are now out available on the market. They're not the Frosted Flakes that we had when we were kids.
Good to know.
Mrs. Mariano?
Emery, thank you. Just a quick question. Tell me about the logistics in the classroom. I'm trying to visualize this. The kids are coming in, you have these lunches, breakfast, rather, cartons of milk, cartons of juice. What happens in the classroom after everything is done?
That was, that is one of the challenges that we face. And basically, what happens is the kid grabs, some of these schools do a grab-and-go, I want to be clear on that, too. Some of the kids have a traditional meal, and then they have a grab-and-go. So they're grabbing the bag and taking it to the classroom with them. In the schools that I described with the Eos Foundation, we are actually bringing those up in the thermal bags, which I know that you're familiar with, and those get delivered to the classroom. At a point in the morning during the instructional lull or what I would say is the teacher's changing focus, the kids come up, they grab their breakfast, and they eat while the teacher's doing the activities that she needs to do, whether it be attendance, whether it be going over homework, various things happen in various stages. It's not always served at the same time every morning, I will tell you that as well. It's served within a window between usually nine and ten o'clock, and because we use those thermal bags, they have the ability to do that. When they're finished with it, we also purchased barrels, they just put the barrel in there. If, because the student does not have to take the milk, we do serve the milk, but the milk is on the side, so not every student has to take the milk. And I know that that was a challenge that we kind of went back and forth on with the USDA and worked that out with Jesse. So we serve all the milks in the classroom, and they don't come back to the cafeteria. They typically go to the nurses, and again, because they're in that cooler with the ice packs, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you.
At this time, I believe we're going to show a preview of the Lawrence High School Spring Musical, Peter Pan. I had an opportunity last night to take my daughter Maya to go see Seussical at the Wetherby. I don't know who folks are, but it was an amazing show.
Started this afternoon.
Very nice.
Very nice.
With an amazing cast, and to see the children sing, many of the leads were in third and fourth grade, and for them to carry that show was, I mean, just really impressive work from the Wetherby kids, and we're very excited about Peter Pan that's coming up for the high school this spring. So roll the tape, please, Mr. Bukarski.
Hi, we're some of the cast members of Peter Pan.
And we'd like to invite you to a show in April.
Come check out our rehearsal video.
(singing) When we get in trouble, there's just one thing to do. We'll just send for Tiger Lily, we'll send for Bear Pig. We've got me belly, 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 send up a friend, and I'll be there. You know you really got a friend, a friend. It'll be true, brothers to the end. Hey! Ha! What we do? I just sent for Tiger Lily, we'll send for Bear Pig. We've got me belly, 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 send up a friend, and I'll be there. You know you really got a friend, a friend. It'll be true, brothers to the end.
Okay, so you see, that's going to be going April ninth to eleventh, and then again the sixteenth through the eighteenth. We hope that Mr. Evangelista will come before to remind folks about this upcoming presentation. With regrets, Mr. Mayor, we have not been able to secure Mr. Murillo tonight. He is under the weather, which is incredibly rare for him. I do want to take a moment, though, to thank our custodial and maintenance staff, as well as your city DPW for the incredible work that was done during Snowmageddon of 2015. This has been certainly unprecedented and like nothing we've ever seen before. So I think, you know, to recognize the work of all those folks that got our roads clear, got our schools clear, dealt with our roofs, and got rid of snow, icicles and everything else so our kids can go back to school deserves a round of applause from us. Do we have a video about, from facilities? In closing, I think you see some, a photo of some icicles. We had some very serious concerns about some of the size of the icicles, and with the weather warming up, we actually had to get some front-end loaders and some cranes to remove some icicles off our building to make sure that our kids and adults were safe, fearing that we might have a problem. So again, just great work by the maintenance crew. I don't know if you have any comments about the DPW, but they were incredibly supportive as well. Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions about any of that from your committee.
Just a great partnership. Thanks.
Okay. I do, I'm going to take it slightly out of order with your permission, and just remind folks, we are doing Snow Day makeup. We're making up two days, this Saturday, March fourteenth, and again on Friday, April third. Both days will be early release days. Backpack letters were sent home, and I think information was sent to the school committee as well by me on email. That will allow us to not bleed into another week in June and allow us to kind of keep our more traditional schedule. So that's just informational for folks. At this time, we'd ask Mr. Racine to come up to discuss the budget process. There's some interesting things happening around the foundation budget that I think he's going to tell you about, as well as just the general timeline and process of how budget works at the state level, so that we all kind of understand what's happening. Joan is going to come around with that kind of handout, I believe, about kind of the process for the state budget. Mr. Racine, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Superintendent. So continuing, I think, the Peter Pan theme of coming attractions, we wanted to preview the budget process for you. And so what Joan is passing out to you now is the general timeline for the state budget process. In terms of the city process, next April, we're going to be coming back to you with a budget for the school department for next year. The fiscal year is July first, 2015, to June thirtieth, 2016. From there, the mayor will be submitting his budget to the city council in May, and then by the end of June, the city council will be taking action and voting to approve the budget by the end of June. What you have in front of you, though, is at a state level, what's happening at the state, which is what's driving the ninety-five percent of our budget. So the governor submits his budget to the legislature. The governor Baker just released his budget March fourth. From there, it then goes to the House, and so the House Ways and Means Committee creates their budget. Last year, they submitted the budget, they released their budget on April ninth. Then by, usually around the end of April, the House will, through the April, will be submitting amendments, and they'll be finalizing what the House budget will be. Last year, they submitted their final budget May one. It will then go to the Senate, and the Senate Ways and Means Committee will review both the governor's budget as well as the House budget, and the House, the Senate Ways and Means Committee will release their budget. Last year, that was May thirteenth. At that point, the Senate will review the Ways and Means budget, they may submit amendments as well, they'll finalize their budget by, last year, it was May thirtieth. Then you've got a governor's budget, you've got a House Ways and Means budget, you've got a House budget, you've got a Senate budget, and what happens is that the House and Senate come together in a conference committee, and they come to a joint agreement on a budget that they submit to the governor. Last year, the conference committee submitted their budget on June twenty-ninth. Then the governor can veto any part of the, any budgets, any line items in that budget. Last year, the governor submitted his vetoes on July eleventh to then finalize the budget in July. So that's sort of what's to come in terms of the overall process. But what's important to note is the real driver of the school department budget is what the state sets for a foundation budget. So back in nineteen ninety-three, under the Ed Reform law, what ended up happening was that the state determines what is a minimum adequate level of funding for every school district. They calculate this every single year. They look at a number of students by grade level, demographic information, programmatic information, and they can come up with a minimum recommended budget level. It's called the foundation budget. From there, school departments can spend above that if they go to their voters and the voters approve to increase above that level. And so that has been in place since nineteen ninety-three, and we're actually at a part right now where there is a group from the legislature who is reviewing that formula. It's the Foundation Budget Review Commission. This is chaired by Senator Sonia Chang Diaz and Representative Alice Peish. They've been holding, they just finished their last public hearing, they've held five public hearings across the Commonwealth, and we were actually fortunate enough to testify in front of that group in Boston earlier this week. And we have provided you a copy of a memo that we sent to them that we wanted to share with you. And really, from our perspective, what we're really trying to do is lobby the voice of Gateway School Districts, where for communities that are unable to go to a voter base to provide additional funding, they, these school districts are completely really reliant on the foundation budget that's set the state. And this was, in general, though, working really well. What you were finding in the nineteen nineties were that Gateway City School Districts were spending more per pupil, they're getting more state aid than surrounding suburbs. But around two thousand, I've, when financial hard times have happened, what's happened? And you'll see in the budget, the memo in front of you, average per pupil spending for Gateway Cities used to be, in two thousand, above surrounding suburbs. Now, over time, suburbs have either cut up to or surpassed Gateway City School Districts. So they're now spending more. This allows them to avoid financial trade-offs, are able to afford higher salaries to attract talent away from Gateway City School Districts, and in fact, it's sort of going against the original foundation of the nineteen ninety-three Ed Reform in Massachusetts. So our Gateway City School Districts are having to make financial trade-offs because benefit costs are going up, employee salaries, utility costs are going up, maintenance for buildings, they're going to have to, those costs are have to go up. But for communities that are able to afford to raise additional taxes to pay for this, they're able to avoid those trade-offs. And so we've outlined a few examples in front of you in terms of that memo, and so we thought we wanted to share this information with you. We shared this with the Foundation Budget Review Commission and want to work with others out there to lobby for additional funding for Gateway City School Districts. So while this is sort of a brief overview, the coming attractions of the budget process, we wanted to give you a heads-up of what's coming, as well as what's happening at the state level.
I just want to add one thing. We may be asking for volunteers from the school committee to work with us to continue lobbying efforts on behalf of Gateway Cities. We have talked to folks in Worcester and other Gateway Cities that are interested in coming together to make sure that the cities get, you know, their fair share of this budget.
Was there conversations about reimbursement for the charter school?
So that did come up during the testimony that we saw, and that, as you may recall, in the governor's budget that he submitted a couple weeks ago, the charter tuition reimbursement was not fully funded for the past number of years at the end of the budget process. That budget account is usually never fully funded, which does impact how much we're able to spend in the school district.
I think till we get there, there's going to be a lot of problems with trying to lift up the base budgets, especially for us. I think there's an opportunity there for a coalition between Gateway Cities and even some of these more affluent communities. If we can get the affluent communities there seventy-five percent, their full funding of charter schools, we could probably get more in the base budget.
Mr. Blackford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you highlighted specifically Lawrence Fall River, New Bedford, Springfield, Holy Oak. Is that common among all Gateways, or is there like an outlier, like there was a Gateway City that actually has increased its funding over its suburban counterparts, or is it just, is this common across the board? Is this Boston, is this Worcester, is this everything?
So Boston's actually a school district that spends more than their foundation budget. They spend, I'd estimate approximately a hundred million, if not more, above the foundation budget that's set. A community like Cambridge, I think, spends twice as much as the foundation budget spent. I think they spend approximately twenty-six thousand dollars per student. So, but oftentimes, you'll see for some of the ones that we outlined, as well as, I think there's some additional Gateway Cities in here, usually, they set, their budgets usually set at the foundation budget level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, Mayor, I'd like you to give the floor to Ms. Ortiz to talk about the Girls in Politics program. If she could just speak briefly about it. I do, I think we've included something in the packet, which I'll read to you, but I know that she's been a advocate for this program. Camp Congress for Girls is a leadership program that introduces girls ages eight to fifteen to politics. Camp begins with a girl-friendly lesson on the structure of our political system. Each girl will choose to run for a seat in the U.S. House of Representatives, the U.S. Senate, or of course, the presidency. She will create her own campaign with a platform, campaign slogan, campaign finance plan, campaign website, and a political ad for TV. All campers will register to vote and then vote in an election. Once elected to Congress and sworn in, the newly installed members of Congress will learn how to introduce a bill, debate the merits of the bill, lobby fellow legislatures, collaborate with the executive branch, and finally vote on the proposed bill. Camp will culminate with a ceremonial signing of the bill by our, by our Miss President. During the camp session, the campers will meet elected officials and political consultants that will serve as honorary camp counselors. Camp Progress for Girls is hosted in one-day sessions during the school year and week-long sessions during the summer break. And I know that Ms. Ortiz has been an advocate for young ladies in this district, so I didn't just know if you wanted to share a few words.
Ms. Ortiz?
Nothing like preparing me.
I was moved by your speech at El Taya to me the other day. There you go.
Just to add to that, anytime you need me to go lobby, obviously, it worked at El Taya, it will work at the State House. Girls in Politics, just like the superintendent over, overviewed, is an opportunity for our girls to understand the process. And our girls are actually going this Sunday from the Arlington, middle school, and it's from grades five through eight, and we are taking forty girls. When I emailed, starting my petition to get these girls involved, I was hoping eight to ten girls, and now we're taking forty. This is a driver for me because education in all parts is necessary, and right now, we have point zero one percent representation, and I say "we" meaning Latin women inside Congress, and that is unacceptable. The average age of a young man running for any kind of office is eighteen years old. The average age for a young woman for anything, meaning advisory board, school committee, is twenty-six. So there's a large disparity between that, and I'm hoping to change that. So that's why I did my little bully puppet over El Taya, and I appreciate honestly the support that I'm getting from the superintendent and the principal at the Arlington School to be able to facilitate this trip.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks.
I would say the principal at the Arlington is very excited. I mean, obviously, forty girls are thrilled to be going this Sunday to Boston. It's an all-day event, eight AM to five PM, so we hope to be able to report back to you later this spring about the outcome of that. Hopefully, we will receive our own president for Lawrence.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, could we take something out of order that I got last minute?
Sure.
Mr. Blackford, you wanted to speak about the college scholarship program, the thirty-thousand-dollar commitment?
Yes.
Mr. Blackford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was a program that I wanted to make sure that was publicly known, and I'd like to give it to Mr. Riley so he can distribute it throughout the high school. It's a new program that was implemented by Framing, Pittsburgh State College, sorry, University, Pittsburgh State University, as well as Worcester State University in conjunction with two community colleges. It's a four-year commitment where you receive two degrees over four years from possibly four different institutions. You would choose two, a community college, then a bachelor's degree at either Fritzburg State University or Worcester State University, and it's thirty thousand dollars for four years. So this was a program that was just announced. I was lucky enough to be at the announcement just by happenstance, and I grabbed a couple flyers, and I wanted to make sure it was distributed. Obviously, this is a huge thing, especially for communities, low-income communities, and I think that... and I think that anyone who's interested in this program, there's an, two emails that you should email. It's 30k@fitchburgstate.edu or 30k@worster.edu. Email either one of those. It's about the $30,000 commitment program where you can receive, again, two degrees and associates, and then a bachelor's. You choose from 10 programs, and you do it in four years.
Do you know if it's an, I can't see from the brochure if it's an application process, or are they taking all comers? Do you know?
I, I believe it is, it is an application process. On the back, it does says "Get Started." There is no website, unfortunately, quite yet. But there's those two emails that I did read. There's also the community colleges, which is Mount Wachusett Community College, and I'm not even gonna try to butcher the, the other community colleges' name, but it, it's an extremely great program that really could help a lot of kids, especially when it comes to student loans.
I think we've seen a lot of kids get trapped by exorbitant debt, and so to have some program like this is, you know, truly unique and special, and something we're gonna look into. So we'll pass it along to Mr. Fiato.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to other, we talked briefly about school committee agenda packets. I believe in the past, we have delivered them, as well as emailed them. I'm wondering if we can just go to email, or if folks have an issue with that. As someone that likes a hard copy myself, I'm not here to judge, so, but I would like the committee's input about if they're willing to, just to go on email, or if they prefer the hard copy as well.
So just to make this less awkward for everyone, I think we should just take, you think we just take a quick vote, so we don't have a long discussion about the matter?
Sure.
Okay? So, I'd like to, so entertain a motion to just get the agenda in email. Somebody has to make it. Yeah, someone was in a second.
If I could just make a quick comment.
Mr. Blackford, a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm actually in full support of this. I would just like to say if we could get it sooner, so more than maybe a week out would be great, especially if we're doing it in email, it's quick, fast, and that would be my own comment.
I'm not sure that they're ready a week, more than a week out. So just, just to manage expectations on it, and I don't think that they're...
You know, we will certainly try to get it sooner, as you can imagine, a lot of things come in last minute, too, and we want to be kind of caught up. So it might be a thing where we can try to get it to you sooner, but then reserve the right to send you additional documents if something happens within a week or 10 days, because a lot of things happen.
So a motion's been made in second.
One more comment. Superintendent, I, I appreciated the packet, or the information that Shalima sent us about a week ago, but I think I would have liked it prior to the last meeting where Mike Fiato was here and the, you know, the high school principals were here. I think having that background information before the meeting, when you have a speaker coming to present something, would, would help us along, you know, to understand what is going on. That's huge with what's happening at the high school.
Sure.
And I would have, I would have appreciated that a little sooner, just so that we could prepare questions, you know, for the principal.
I think that's totally fair, and I think we have reserved the right to bring them back before you, now that you do have the information, because I think high school redesign is gonna be an ongoing process. This is, you know, phase one, is the ninth grade academy, as we talked about, or Mr. Fiato talked about, the upper academies have to kind of come together to talk about what the upper grades are gonna look like in the future. Knowing that for next year, we're still gonna keep the six academies, but in the future, it may look different. They may do a early college process, they might do experiential learning. So I think it's not a one-time event, but something that we'd like to bring these folks before you with regular updates.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? See no other, they take a vote on the matter? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? See none? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The last thing is for people's calendars. We have set the Lawrence High School graduation at May 31st, 2015. We will be providing you more information on that in the coming days, but obviously, the school committee is welcome and hopefully expected to be there, to be on stage with us to celebrate this great day. We will also get you the rain date, but all that information will be coming to you. I just wanted to put it in folks' bonnets now, just so that you have an early head start on it. I know that the end of May seems like a long way away, but it comes quicker than you can imagine. Last thing on the agenda, Mr. Mayor's final questions from the group, before we go to public participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, Superintendent Riley, is regarding the health service report that was given to us.
Okay.
So one is a technical question on one, two, page three. When it says year-to-date, I'm looking at the pregnancy data. Year-to-date, FY15, is it from September till now, or from January till now?
I don't actually have that in my packet. Dr. Bergeron?
September.
Okay. You can have Dr. Bergeron come up.
Is there any way someone can give you the document, so I don't ask questions that we might not know?
Do we have the document, Joan?
Joan.
The charts, the health charts.
Dr. Bergeron, could you come up as well? She's our expert.
So I mean, my, my question is just, what is the current programs that we have right now regarding health education, talking to young people about pregnancy, safe sex, you know, that type of nature? Looking at the data right now, I mean, the first thing that stood out was just pregnancies happening in, in middle schools, and I know that happens in, you know, in, in every urban city, and it seems like it's lower than what it was last year. But when I look at the data from LHS, we see it almost doubling. So I, I'm just interested to know what we are doing, and is there, are we looking into anything, trying to change our approach, basically?
Okay. We currently use the Minnesota Health Curriculum as our model for what we do for abstinence-based education, is the primary model that we utilize throughout the district. We bring in guest speakers. Some are coming in from Healthy Futures. We've had guest speakers in around domestic and, and relationship, healthy relationships and things like that from the YMCA and the YWCA for both boys and, and girls. We do not do a specific required course. Everybody has to take health, so that's where all of this is done. There's one health requirement at the high school level. At the middle school, they get health from grades five through eight, and that's where a lot of the foundation is set around healthy living habits, healthy sexual relations, those types of things. And then they use community providers, people from like greater Lawrence Family Health Center work with the students. They have after-school programs for teens who are looking at relationships and looking at healthy choice and decision-making for whether or not they are going to abstain, what they're going to do, how they would address those issues if they arise. We do not do a full-on health-related, like how do you, how do you put on condoms? How do you do those types of things currently?
I would say also about the data, some of it may be slightly misleading because many of the students that are on that list have been re-engaged in the process.
Right.
So whereas in the past, they would not have shown up on our roll, we have re-engaged many of our, many students that were pregnant and got them back in school.
Yeah, we did see a larger number this year in terms of returned students who came back to us pregnant.
Okay, I mean, and that could be it, but it's still, I don't know. You guys know more about the data, just find it hard to see it doubling in, in the course of one year. So just going back to, to the program at, so middle school, five to eight, they have health classes, and they sort of talk about, about this. Then at the high school, you said that there's no required course?
One required health course that students have to take through the course of their four years. Most of them take freshman or sophomore year.
And it's a, it's an abstinence-based course?
Yes.
Okay. Are all the programs that are related to anything dealing with pregnancy, sex, is it all abstinence-based?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm not that old, but I, like, I remember being in middle school, and it wasn't like that. So has, has this changed recently, in the last five years, 10 years?
Oh, no, we've been an abstinence-based program for at least 12 to 15 years.
And you guys think that's working?
We have reduced our pregnancy rates significantly, particularly for students under the age of 18. We do have a lot of older students, and that's where our teen pregnancy rate is still very high, starting at age 18 to the 22 range, which they can still, still consider the teen pregnancy rate. That's where the highest rates are in the city currently. So yes, we've seen great progress with the younger population, and we're not seeing as many pregnancies in that, we used to have some as low as 12, in that 12 to 17 range currently.
Chair, can I make a comment?
Student member Lopez.
Just out of curiosity, will there ever be a class or requirement where they do teach you how to put on a condom or something like that? Because I know in my health class, we focus more on abstinence from drugs and sex, and I think I personally don't see it working that much, and I think students need more education, and if they are having relations like that, it would be, I think it would be better for them to know, and know better just how to take care of themselves.
At present...
Way to jump right in.
At present, there is no specific course that will have to be part of a health class, because that's not enough for a course. We have had a lot of resistance from community and religious groups within the community around the school system taking on that role from families, so would have to be brought back through a health advisory group again for that to be brought forward if we were going to make that change.
Yeah, I, I think that what we're talking about here is a public policy that is, at least, in the past, in this community, has been one that has been very contentious. And so I think that, you know, a productive part of this is if any one of the school committee members, and even the new student member, wants to hold some type of a conversation with the community about it, I think that would be very helpful. I think that would be instructive for the superintendent. But it's definitely one of those things where this isn't like, should we extend the day?
Right.
This is about what we teach kids in the classroom that have, have nothing to do with teaching and learning. So I would encourage us, if that's really what we want to do, you know, I'm encouraged that you're getting kids back into the school who are, who are pregnant. That's, I think, a positive thing. But again, the answer to this is, will we, as a community, support not, changing the way we're doing it today? And I'm not sure that the answer to that is yes.
And I would just say, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've really tried to be respectful of the community, and this is, as you noted, a contentious issue. And, you know, if this school committee wants to take on that role of, of getting a mandate from the community to change this practice, you know, we're certainly open to that. I, I just can tell you from my short time here, we've heard, I would say, more against going, and doing anything beyond the abstinence curriculum, but, you know, if folks have the time and inclination to get a community mandate, we certainly want to be responsive to people.
And we have done, from the nurses, making, they will refer students who are in need of that kind of service to a couple of the agencies that are very closely located around the high school, so that they can get that ongoing support if they need that, and that's what they're looking for.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Priano.
I guess my confusion is, I remember being in high school, and there were at least two programs, not within the schools, but nonprofits, that dealt specifically with that, and, and had teens talking to other teens about these type of issues. So knowing that that doesn't go on any longer, and we're not doing any of that, it, it seems strange, but I understand that it's not an easy topic.
I, I would just follow up with that, is, I'm not sure that there are no community-based organizations doing anti-T programming? They're just not happening for the schools, that's what I...
I guess, what I'm saying is, within, these organizations were doing it at the high school, and recruiting at the high school.
And there's nothing like going on, no?
There is some healthy relationship groups going on, but nothing that I can say is specific to contraception.
That's interesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Oh, Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you. But I would, I will say, and forgive me if I'm mistaken, our rates are down, even though this number seems to have, or is giving the appearance of, of jumping. Weren't we given a report previously in, in the last, I guess, three to four months, if, if that, on the rate of pregnancies and how that has gone down over the years?
Yes, our rates are down. We have seen a small group...
Percentage, exactly.
Because of the returning students that we've brought back that were pregnant. We have seen a bump a little bit this year. We average somewhere usually around the 60 in total for the school year.
So the, so the average for a whole school year is 60?
Around, yeah, around that for the last few years.
And so is this 42 number just January and February?
Well, if you notice, 60 is our total for the district at the very bottom.
Mm-hmm.
So 42 is just the high school campus.
So that year-to-date, is that, sorry?
Ms. Ortiz still has the floor?
Sorry.
He was talking for me, but that's exactly what I, that, that year-to-date number on here, this 60, but if I go up, if I'm just looking at the high school, 23 is year-to-date...
Last year.
Last year, the, the whole year.
Last year, this time.
December 31st.
No.
Okay.
Year-to-date for each month is the year-to-date through that month and that year.
Through that month and that year. So therefore, it's this time, this year...
Last year and this year.
That's where that jump is. But overall, 60 is our baseline?
We've had, in the last few years, we've been around 60 pregnancies in total for the school year.
For the school year.
We had been as high as in the 90s, you know, within the last decade.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. We don't do public participation from the audience, so if you have something to say afterwards, we're gonna have a moment, you can come up and talk. So we'll let you do it at that point. Anything further?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Blackford.
Thank you. Obviously, there's interest on this committee. Is it possible to get a little bit more in-depth information for us, I guess, offline, just on the program that's currently provided, what the state mandate is for a health class? And I'd say maybe, maybe a little more detailed on the age groups on that pregnancy level, just so we can...
I cannot provide you the age groups on the teens, because that is confidential data.
Understandable.
So unless they're willing to share that, I can't give it to you.
But, so...
That's HIPAA? Sorry, Mr. Blackford.
That's under HIPAA. They don't, if students don't report, we are not allowed to share that.
So I guess my question would be then, our current health curriculum and what state-mandated health curriculum is, and if there, I, because I believe there's multiple options, because there are some districts that do sex ed, there are some districts that don't.
It is, it is a local decision in terms of which program you utilize for health education. There are health curriculum frameworks that you are to cover in your health classes.
So if we could get that information, I think, I think this committee would be very interested. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, I would like to also see the Gateway Cities data, if it's possible. I don't know if they can share it with us, and that way we can compare our city to the other Gateway Cities as well.
We can get that from the Department of Public Health.
Because we always compare everything to the Getaways, so why not?
Cool.
True.
Thank you.
Write it down, or I won't forget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this information we got? I did want to say that the last meeting, we talked a little bit about the exit strategy for the high school, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Fiato and with some of the counselors at the high school. A very interesting memo he put in front of me, you know, that they're finalizing it about what they do across the, across the academies. And I encouraged him and encouraged the superintendent at some point when they finalize it, that I think it's a good piece of information to get out to us. But again, as they're doing the transition, I think it's a little bit in flux right today. But I was emboldened by the effort that's being put on in ensuring that when a student graduates to high school, is not just graduating with a high school diploma, but with skills and tools, and preparing them for the workforce or college, that we're not where we want to be, and the staff knows that. That piece was clear to me. But the better part was that everybody knows that there's, that what work needs to be done. So I said that I'd meet with them between that meeting and today, and I did. And if you want further information, just shoot me a note, and I'll make sure I get you what I have. But most part, I was emboldened by... But most part, I was emboldened by the fact that everybody knew there's work to be done, so nobody was hiding, but that there is, that they're working on it. So I just want to make sure I report back on that piece. Any other questions or anything other than you?
Yes.
Thank you. What was that? Mr. Blackford?
Thank you. Now that we can see the ground again, I guess, under the snow, I think it's a good time to discuss possibly going back out on the road for our meetings, if anyone's interested.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, we know. Anyone?
Yes.
Is there a suggestion where to go?
Arlington.
Here.
Miss Piana.
Right away. Is the Family Resource Center available?
I think it's available. I don't know if it's big enough.
It's tight. It's tight.
Is it tight?
Yeah, I'm not sure where you'd sit everybody.
I just think that would be a great place.
We could open up that big space, remember where we did the fair? I mean, there's space there. I just-
Oh, that's right.
Can we get back to you on that?
That's a good far back.
We can get you that information tomorrow. I could walk it.
You know, where parents go there, there would be a good place that maybe we would have more parents attend the meetings.
Yeah, cool. So that would be a, is people okay with that being a primary spot? But if we can't do that, given space thing, is there a second place, just in case?
Arlington.
Say again, Ms. Ortiz?
The Arlington.
Seconded.
All right, seconded on the Arlington. Any other discussion? See none? So the motion on the floor is to go to primary, first, the Family Resource Center, and if not, due to space constraint, go to the Arntis School. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? See none? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent.
I do have something else.
Oh, Ms. Ortiz.
I wanted to bring up prom. Is there anything that we do to help our students with prom dresses? Is there any organizations involved within Lawrence High for prom dresses?
I don't know the answer to that. I know that we had a student a few years ago who was pretty amazing at getting folks to donate prom dresses, but we can get you that information. I'm going to put it on my list to see what Mr. Fiatto does.
Can I comment on that, Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, student member Lopez.
I know that if you go to the main office in the high schools and you ask if anyone has donated a prom dress, you can see if that's your size and talk about it. And I know some people have come in and talked about, like, pop-up stores that are giving away or selling at a low price prom dresses.
What's that? Mr. Piana.
Can we get a hand of applause to the student members?
Yeah, seriously.
Good job, guys. And another softball question.
No, it's been a long time coming, now you're here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Molly, we'll never forget you. I apologize.
We do have one speaker for public participation today, Mr. Molly. The floor is yours, sir.
Mrs. Superintendent, can we suspend the rules just there was a student member that was going to say something, if she can, if she wanted to say a word? No, Mr. Molly, you go first. You got two minutes.
Good evening, honorable members. We, the parent and citizen, are proud that our public school is on the way to become the best public school in the whole nation, the best model of success that made city of immigrant to rise up again. We are proud that our public school with impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Riley has risen up to be the best. We have now more Level One school, more MCAS improvement, more high school graduate. We are proud to inform you that turnaround plan is working. Lawrence Public Schools and our 83,000 citizens are behind the best teachers and union, that after three years now they have the contract. Parent and citizens support our teachers and their union. We appreciate their hard work. Our Lawrence Public School has now a parent center that encourages the highest parental involvement. Turnaround plan has made our public school one of the best in the whole nation. The focus of the budget for the first time is only a student and our education. We demand of you, as our elected official, the important ear of the election, support our teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. Do we have a student that would like to speak?
Just when you come to the mic, just tell us your name and what school you're in.
Hi, I'm Brittany Ortiz from PFA, and it was like on the pregnancy subject. I know it sounds like a little weird, but like, what if you guys introduced, like, the, I know some districts have baby-think-it-over, if you introduce it to, like, grades that are about to come into high school, or like, like freshman academy, when like, rates are usually still low, because as high school goes on in prom and all that, you know, like, stuff does happen, and if they're exposed to like, you know, like a pre, like, like an experiment before, I think like, they'll think a little bit more before they like, be like reckless about, like, actually engaging in relations like that. So I don't know, like, maybe that'll help, because now they'll have like, a mindset, and it's like, only for a week or so, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good idea.
Mr. Mayor, will you close us out?
And motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion remains seconded. All those in favor?
All right.
Please have it. Thank you so much.